Good evening. This is the 50th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. It's now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones and put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be provided by Pastor Darryl Brace of Mount Pleasant Ministry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Greetings, Council President Young and to members of the City Council. Special thanks to Councilman Scott for this invitation to offer the invocation. Let us pray. All wise and eternal God our Father, we come to you today acknowledging that you are both Creator and Sustainer of all that is, is, and will ever be. Thank you for this day and all its blessings. Thank you for life and life eternal. Thank you for your gracious forgiveness, your merciful long-suffering, and your faithful loving kindness. Occupy and fill these hallowed halls of government with your presence. I ask that you guide and direct the leadership and membership of our City Council. Guide and direct the thoughts, words, actions, and proceedings of this council. Grant the wisdom and courage to both lead and serve in humility and integrity. May the actions of this council be tempered with hearts of care, compassion, and understanding. Grant that each leader and member may sense, honor, and fulfill their responsibility to the City Council, to our city, to our community, and to our country, and indeed to all kindest and peoples, to govern in a manner that best serves the needs and interests of the city of Baltimore and its constituency. May they ever be reminded and reflect on the proverbs of King Solomon, "When the righteous increase, the people rejoice; but when a wicked man rules, the people groan," and that righteousness exalts a nation or a city, but sin is a disgrace to any people. This I pray, and the only na- manner I know how. The name of our Lord, my Lord, my Savior, Jesus, who is the Christ. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presentation will be provided by April Cruz and Christopher Deuce on behalf of Civic Works.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening, and thank you for giving us a chance to talk to you about the great things that our programs are doing in the community. Again, my name is April Cruz. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator at Civic Works. We are located in the Bel Air Edison Community, and our mission is to help strengthen Baltimore communities through community service, education, and skill development. The program that I work for is called retrofit Baltimore, and that is our energy efficiency program. And the mission of that program is to help low-income residents weatherize their home and also opportunity for them to go solar as well. It's very important that we encourage folks in the community to weatherize their homes. For one, it will help them cut down on their utility bills. It will help them live in a comfortable environment, and it will also help keep pollutants out of their homes in cases of where people have respiratory issues. The great thing about our program is that once you've been approved to participate in our program, you are assigned an energy advisor, and that person is your go-to resource, and they will help you through the process from beginning to end, and they will help answer any questions or concerns that you might have about your weatherization process. The other great thing is that we provide the contractors for you, and the contractors are vetted through our program, so we're making sure that these folks are doing quality work on your homes. And lastly, I'd like to say that our program is about reinvestment in our community because the folks that do the weatherization projects on your homes come through our job training and job placement program with Chris is going to talk to you about right now.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Christopher Deuce. I am the Training Coordinator for Civic Works Center for Sustainable Careers. What we specifically focus on is job training and placement, so we're all about getting city residents employment opportunities in one of four fields, and that's solar panel installation, home performance or weatherization, which is what April was just talking about, lead and asbestos remediation, as well as storm water management. We do not care about a high school diploma. We don't care about a criminal record. We have case management and services that are there to provide city residents with expungements towards any legal issues that they have, as well as transportation and assistance with getting driver's licenses or getting things, like getting licenses unsuspended and things of that nature. So basically, we support with housing, transportation, dealing with criminal records, as pretty much everything that somebody would need to be in the workforce. As well, we, the positions pay anywhere from fourteen to eighteen dollars an hour. Our average of 2018 was about fifteen fifty. Like I said, we don't care about a high school diploma. We don't care about a criminal record. We just want to help city residents transition into full-time employment. Ninety percent of our graduates have had past, some past run-ins with law enforcement. We want to make sure that people have the opportunity to work. All a person has to do is sign up, show up every single day, get their certifications, and then we will place them. They don't have to worry about finding employment after our program. We will place them with an employer partner. Our graduation rates right now are eighty-nine percent graduation and a ninety-four percent placement rate. So if you or anybody that you know or anybody in your district are interested in finding full-time employment or is having struggles, struggles with finding full-time employment, just come to one of our information sessions, which we have any Tuesday at one o'clock. That's any Tuesday at one o'clock for any city resident looking for work. Does that all make sense? Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you for the great work you do. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to quickly add and thank Civic Works. I want to thank Senator Ben Cardin and also Senator Van Hollen, along with our mayor and council president, worked to secure a $1.1 million grant with Civic Works to work with the Park Heights Renaissance, to work and secure jobs for fifty to sixty young people through the Youth Build Program. So thank you again for including that northwest area in your, the mission and vision of what you do with your organization.
I thank you again. It is the Council Custom Generalized Invocation Act for most generalized prayer. Most by Council Scott, second by Councilman Schleifer, I mean Councilman Cohen. All those in favor of generalized invocation, say aye. All those oppose nay. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the January 28th City Council Meeting is on councilmembers' desks.
The motion to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Bullock, second by Councilwoman Snead. All those in favor of approving the journal, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion has been carried. The journal is adopted. Executive nomination withdrawn.
EA 19 dash zero two three one, Melissa Martinez, Member of Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, District 14. EA 19 dash zero two three five, Ayanna Williams, Commissioner, Baltimore City Youth Commission, District 12.
Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three zero, Yield Excise Tax Tax Rates. For the purpose of amending the tax rates used to calculate the yield excise tax imposed on the tax yield from transactions for which recidation taxes and transfer taxes are due under City Code, Article 28, Subtitle 16 and Subtitle 17 respectively, and providing for a special effective date, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three one, Corrective Consumer Price Index Used in the Adjustment of the Energy Tax Rate. For the purpose of correcting the name of the Consumer Price Index used in the annual adjustment of the energy tax rate, modifying the fiscal year for the rate adjustment and providing for a special effective date, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three two, The Baltimore City Sustainability Plan. For the purpose of adopting a new sustainability plan for Baltimore City, providing for a special effective date, and generally relating to all elements of sustainability, including air quality, water quality, resource conservation, recycling, energy, public health, environmental justice, reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and increasing the use of alternative means of transportation, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three three, Res zoning 801 through 803 North Chester Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 801 through 803 North Chester Street, as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque, from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district, sponsors Snead, Stokes, President Young.
This has been assigned to Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three four, Community Relations, Redefining Employer. For the purpose of redefining employer for purposes of the laws governing unlawful employment practices, sponsors Snead, Henry, Bullock, Burnett, Cohen, Dorsey, Scott, Clark, Middleton.
Please note Councilman Risinger is a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. This is just an extension of what we were working on with the lactation bill. This actually brings us in line to what other jurisdictions are doing. We will actually have, if you sign onto this bill and support it, it will be actually one person from CRC, and they will be going after people who don't fall in line, who don't recognize people of different races, genders, or sexes, and above all things, just making sure that people are doing, organizations are doing the right thing. So I hope that you will support this bill, colleagues.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee with your chair.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three five, Zoning Use Regulations Banquet Halls. For the purpose providing that in an IMU zoning district banquet halls are allowed as a conditional use requiring approval by ordinance of the mayor and city council, sponsors Henry.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19 dash zero three three six, Public Ethics Law Conforming Modifications. For the purpose of conforming the City Ethics Code with the amendments to the State Ethics Law made by Chapter 31, 2017 Laws of Maryland, altering the definition of interest to exclude certain mutual funds and exchange traded funds, adding a participation prohibit, prohibition for certain officials who are former lobbyists, prohibiting elected officials from assisting in certain matters under certain circumstances, altering a reporting requirement for certain debts, adding a requirement to report when a public official's spouse is a lobbyist, limiting access to home addresses listed in a financial disclosure statement, clarifying and conforming related provisions, and generally relating to the City Ethics Code, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the Baltimore City Board of Ethics.
This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. Resolution being introduced.
City Council Resolution 19 dash zero one three two R, Informational Hearing Homelessness. For the purpose of calling on the Baltimore City Agencies working on the problem of homelessness, including the Mayor's Office of Human Services, the Department of Social Services, and the Baltimore City Public School System to update the City Council on the state of homelessness in Baltimore City and what the agencies are doing to combat it, sponsors Stokes, President Young, Henry, Bullock, Burnett, Snead, Cohen, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Scott, Middleton, Risinger, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to get an, City Council, get an update on the homelessness in Baltimore City with the city agencies, because actually the Baltimore City had a, called a hot team, and it's actually two officers that cover the whole city. So I just made a suggestion to Deputy Commissioner Bonaparte to go back and those good retired police officers, bring them back and make them part of the hot team because it's not required. And when you only have two officers doing the whole city, it becomes overwhelming for them.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 19 dash zero one three three R, Informational Hearing Agency Responses to Opioid Epidemic. For the purpose of requesting an informational hearing with all the governmental agencies responding to the opioid epidemic in Baltimore City, including the Health Department, the Mayor's Office, the Fire Department, and the Baltimore Police Department, so that these agencies can update the Baltimore City Council regarding their response to the epidemic, sponsors Stokes, President Young, Henry, Bullock, Burnett, Snead, Cohen, Costello, Pinkett, Dorsey, Scott, Middleton, Risinger, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a former hearing on the op, op, opioid problem here in Baltimore City, and what happens is there has not been a decrease. There's been an increase, and I know the governor has put more money in the budget and just get an update for this council, how we can tap into some of the resources and additional resources that should be here for Baltimore City, so we can make sure we can decrease this problem all over, not just the city, but all over the state. Thank you.
This has been assigned to Budget Appropriation Committee.
City Council Resolution 19 dash zero one three four R, Recognizing Black Lives Matter Week of Action in Baltimore City Schools. For the purpose of recognizing the first full week of February each year as Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action and calling on all schools and organizations dealing with youth in Baltimore to do their part to bring awareness to the school-to-prison pipeline, the need to recruit and retain black teachers, and the full rights of students as outlined in the National Student Bill of Rights, sponsors Cohen, Henry, President Young, Bullock, Burnett, Snead, Pinkett, Dorsey, Scott, Clark, Middleton, Risinger, Stokes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by recognizing Patrick Ray, faculty in literature at Bard Early College High School, as well as Brittany Johnstone, a school psychologist at Hazelwood Elementary Middle, and Alexander Lewis, a seventh grader at Hazelwood as well. This resolution was introduced in support of the BeMore Caucus to reaffirm the Baltimore City Council's commitment to Black Lives Matters Week of Action in our schools. As a city whose original charter had segregation written into it, we know that our young people have suffered the impact of white supremacy within our curriculum, within our schools. As a history teacher, I saw a curriculum that was entirely Eurocentric, that really only mentioned people of color in the context of slavery and other problems. We know that when we teach in buildings that are physically falling apart and resemble jails, that that sends a powerful message to our kids. And so I'm proud to stand in support of the BeMore Caucus and their attempt to end the school-to-prison pipeline by pushing for restorative practices within our schools, to hire more faculty of color, which has been shown to increase academic outcomes, and finally to make sure our curriculum is multicultural, that it recognizes that black history is American history, and not just slavery, but also the everyday achievement of people of color throughout our country and frankly, our city's history. Let me just close by stating that the Baltimore City Council stands behind the BeMore Caucus in demanding justice and equity in all of our schools, and I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Please note that Councilman Costello is a co-sponsor. The motion is second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion carried. Rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the resolution.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 19 dash oh one three four R, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
City Council Resolution 19 dash zero one three five R, Supporting Coal Community Transition Legislation in Maryland. For the purpose of urging the Maryland General Assembly to pass and the governor to sign legislation establishing a clear and enforceable commitment to finally move Maryland beyond coal-fired power plants and to create a coal community transition fund to support impacted communities and workers, sponsors Burnett, Henry, Bullock, Snead, Cohen, Pinkett, Dorsey, President Young, Scott, Clark, Middleton, Risinger, Stokes.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this, intended this resolution is to move the state of Maryland forward. Much like the spirited debate that we've been having around the trash incineration in Baltimore City, we are also impacted by the prevalence of coal plants. There are six across the state of Maryland, two of which are just outside Baltimore City located in Anarodno County. And troubling statistic I heard was that eighty-eight percent of Marylanders are impacted by the present, the prevalence of these coal plants, and that impacts, you know, asthma rates, bronchitis, heart disease, a lot of other ailments that impact families in Baltimore City, our young people in Baltimore City. And if we want to move forward in a way to impact climate change, we've seen the weather across the country. That is no accident. It is caused by our reliance on, on coal, our reliance on fossil fuels, and we have to move forward to a green economy. So what I'm asking for is a, to pull back the use of these and also to establish a transition fund, because we also need to acknowledge that there is an impact on jobs when these decisions are made. And so we're asking for the establishment of a fund to provide job training and other sort, other forms of financial assistance to help workers transition into the 21st century green economy. With that, I would like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion carries. Rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 19 dash oh one three five R, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion carries. This resolution is adopted. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda is the motion to approve the consent count. Moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of approving this consent calendar, say aye. Those oppose nay. The motion carries. This calendar is approved. Now move the bills on second reading. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I make a motion to read short titles remaining in the reading.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of short titles remaining of the hearing, say aye. All opposed nay. The motion carries. Short titles. Now move the bills on second reading. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero three zero six, Health Coal Clean Air Regulation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this hearing, it was, it was well-attended by both sides. Mr. President and my colleagues, this bill is really simple. It's to the point. What we want is clear, clean air for the citizens of Baltimore. All the bills requesting is the company Willabrator to lower their emissions and do monitoring inspections. We're asking for no more or no less, and we're asking them that to retrofit or re-engineer their plant to meet those emissions. So, Mr. President, the amendments I have on my colleague's desk, I move the amendments.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay. The motion approved. Bills amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Risinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable amended.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
President Young?
Yes.
President Young, yes. Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen, yes. Councilman Scott? Councilman Scott, yes. Councilman Dorsey? Councilman Dorsey, yes. Councilman Henry? Councilman Henry, yes. Councilman Schleifer?
Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we all want cleaner air, and I believe we need to do better when it comes to recycling and getting rid of trash. I want us to be a leader in this space who takes best practices from all across the world and also to strive to do our best. I want us to also have a fiscal impact analysis on the cost of these alternatives. I also want us to have a plan in place when it comes, I'm sorry, I'm a little under the weather. I also want us to have a plan in place of what comes next, so our taxpayers aren't potentially left footing a bill north of a hundred million dollars. We don't all need to agree on what the plan will be, but we, we should agree that we need to have a plan. As much as I want to be in favor of this bill, until we have a plan and know what the financial impact would be, it is irresponsible to rush and vote for this bill. So I vote no.
Councilman Schleifer, no. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Pinkett?
Chair recognizes Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Council President. For about thirty years, residents of communities like Cherry Hill, Westport, Locust Point, other sections of South Baltimore, an overwhelming majority of them black, have suffered in a direct way the negative impacts of emissions from waste incinerated in the city. It really is unconscionable that this condition has lasted this long with no real plan to wean us, wean our city off of this form of waste disposal. I'm proud to be on a council that seeks to remedy, remedy this. Matter of fact, this council has consistently prioritized the city's residents by supporting time after time legislation that serves to protect our environment for generations to come. I'm in support of any measure that serves to clean our air and protect our citizens. If not, I would not have voted in positive for this in committee. But my desire to seize this moment doesn't excuse me from fulfilling the fiscal stewardship that I was also elected to fulfill. The fact that this bill is moving forward without a fiscal analysis from the Finance Department is a failing of the deliberation that a decision of this magnitude warrants. I abstain.
Councilman Pinkett abstains. Councilman Burnett? Councilman Burnett, yes. Councilman Bullock? Councilman Bullock, yes. Councilman Risinger? Councilman Risinger, yes. Councilman Costello?
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. As my colleague Councilman Pinkett said, for decades, communities in South Baltimore, some of which are in the 11th District, have suffered from a public health perspective as a result of the incinerators and their operations. I want to vote for this. I voted in favor of this on Wednesday evening in committee with the understanding that it would be held on second reader until we had an appropriate fiscal analysis. I co-sponsored this bill because I feel that this topic is worthy of this City Council's time. The unfortunate reality is that we don't have a fiscal note. I heard a lot of things today at the council launch suggesting that a fiscal note or fiscal analysis is somehow guesstimation, that it's somehow propaganda intended to kill the bill. It's not. It's a series of intelligent projections based on known variables. As financial stewards of our city, it is something that we should and must take into account and into consideration. These financial analyses are completed by highly educated and experienced analysts who do this work for a living. That's the first issue. We've had varied fiscal notes between nine million and a hundred and eighteen million dollars. The second issue, our hospitals were never consulted. We have medical institutions, anchor institutions in our city which rely on Curtis Bay Energy to incinerate medical waste that cannot be disposed of otherwise. And third, Veolia was not brought to the table. Veolia powers one quarter of the Central Business District where we are right now, which lies in the 11th District. Of that, fifty percent of their energy comes from the Bresco facility. We could have waited a week. I understand that there's an eighteen-month effective date from signature of the mayor on this bill. We easily could have amended this bill on second or third reader to move that up a month so we wouldn't have lost a day on this. All I've asked for is that we waited until Friday to get that fiscal analysis before moving this bill. I think it's very irresponsible for the City Council to vote on this, and therefore, after four and a half years on this council, after well over a thousand votes for the first time, I have no other choice but to abstain.
Councilman Costello abstains. Councilman Stokes? Councilman Stokes, yes. Councilwoman Snead? Councilwoman Snead, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
My vote is yes, and I would like to add, the Clean Air Act is a momentous change and will bring momentous changes in the way the city operates, but until the Clean Air Act is law, plans will not be made. We know that. And once it is law, Solid Waste, the Public Works, will complete the planning that's already begun and bring it back to us. But nothing happens until meaningful change occurs. Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes.
Twelve? Where are we now?
With a vote of twelve, we have a vote of twelve yeses, a vote of one nays, and two abstentions.
This bill moves to third reading.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Third reading for final passage.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero two nine seven, Prevailing Wages Tax Increment Financing Projects. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero two nine nine, Res zoning 2501 through 2513, 2515, and 2525 West Franklin Street and 330 North Warwick Avenue. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero three zero zero, Res zoning 1600 West 41st Street and Block 3575C, Lot 374. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero three zero one, Res zoning 6435 Pulaski Highway. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero three zero nine, Sailor Properties 732 West Lexington Street. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash zero three one six, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Baltimore City Information and Technology, five million, two hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Risinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announced, Chair recognizes Councilman, Councilman Costello?
Pianale Audit Oversight Commission will still be holding its hearing on Wednesday, February 27th in chambers, although the time has moved, been moved from 5:00 PM up to 11:00 PM. February twenty-seventh, in chambers, although the time has been moved from five PM up to four PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Stokes, you have any? Councilwoman Sneed, you have any? Councilman Reisinger?
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will have a legislative oversight hearing on March the sixth, two thousand and nineteen at one PM in the council chambers. This is Department of Transportation in consultation with the Complete Streets Advisory Council will present to the Land Use and Transportation Committee a community engagement plan containing a description of the methods of community engagement to be used to obtain public input. The committee will also have a hearing on Bill eighteen dash zero-three-zero-five on March the twenty-seventh at one PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning on certain properties in the Harwood community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognize Council Vice President Middleton.
The, thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill eighteen oh-two-eight-oh Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, ten AM, here in council chambers, and it's the sale of property, former bed of Dillon Street. Also, Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill number eighteen dash oh-two-eight-four Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at ten oh-five AM, here in council chambers, and it's the sale of property, former bed of a ten-foot alley bounded by North Howard Street, West Twenty-Fourth Street, May Street, and West Twenty-Third Street. And lastly, I would like to suspend the rules, ten-two and ten-thirteen, to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those in favor of suspending rules, announce a Henry, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Thank you. The committee will hear Taxation Finance and Economic Development Committee, Bill number nineteen dash zero-three-three-oh Thursday, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, ten-ten AM, here in council chambers, and it's to yield excise tax tax, tax rates. Thank you.
Committee announced, Chair recognize Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, the Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing, a rescheduled hearing for Legislative Oversight zero-zero-four-six on Tuesday, February nineteenth, at four PM, here in the Duburn chambers. This will be an update from the Fire Department on fire safety efforts and statistics in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Committee announcements. Chair recognize Council Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the city council will be held Monday.
Oh, 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 I said no regular announcements, okay? Chair recognize Council Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen, at five PM, and may we have a moment of silence for the now twenty-eight victims of homicide, and also our continued prayers for the families of the opioid epidemic. And I didn't get the name, Councilman. You said Kristin?
Come on, man.
The name.
Kathy Christian, my chief of staff, her father passed away.
The father of Ms. Chris, Kathy Christian, that's staff of Councilman Stokes of the twelfth district.
There may be no further business. This concludes the fifty-second term of Baltimore City Council. Good night. Hey, Bill.